All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the West Covina Planning Commission for Tuesday, March 12, 2019, 7:03 and 1/2. Not bad. First thing we're going to do is have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led tonight by Commissioner Kennedy, and then if you would remain standing after that for a moment of silent prayer meditation, we'll be good to go. Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Holtz.
Where is it?
Commissioner Hing.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Haques.
Here.
And Chairman Redholtz.
Here. Next item is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on February 26. Any commissioners wish to make any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved as they are presented, and we shall move right along. The next item is oral communications. This would be the time when any member of the public would like to address the commission on any items that are not on the agenda. I don't think so. So we will dispense with that and move on to the next item. We have no public hearings on the agenda tonight, so we will move into the first of the study sessions, which is item number two, which is a general plan annual report for 2017, which will be presented by Mr. Anderson.
Yes. I'll go through this fairly summarily. It is something that we do every year. The city council adopted a new general plan on December 20, 2016, and so one of the things that the state requires is that every year that you do a status of implementing the goals of the general plan that you have, that each city has, and you're supposed to do that and turn it in to them by April 1st. So we did do that and took it to the city council on February 20, which is what's required. We're bringing it to you more, well, we took it to them more or less as a review item and it's coming to you for the same reason. It's just informational. We're not asking you to take any action or do anything, but we do want you to know, you know, sort of provide a status for the general plan, as well as the housing element. I'll talk about the general plan first. The general plan, when we did the general plan, we did an environmental impact report and part of the general plan also developed a capacity for growth that allows for the number of units that might be added in the city in various places and the amount of other types of square footage that might be added. And you do that so you can do an environmental impact report to then review the environmental impacts of those, which makes it easier then for development to occur in those locations. Really, we only had two development projects this year that were in the districts, corridors, or neighborhood centers, and that was the Portos and Merrill Gardens Assist Living Facility. Both of those are in the downtown area. Oddly enough, neither one of those was done under the downtown plan. They were both submitted previous to the general plan, but they are under construction in the downtown area. So since they were, neither one was reviewed by the general plan EIR, they don't change the capacity. So that's pretty much the general plan in the progress report that we have, and we have already submitted that to the state as well. Part of the general plan is also something called the housing element, which is an important thing to understand as the planning commissioners. It is required to be in the general plan, and it is the only item in the general plan that's required to be updated at regular intervals. So currently, the housing element interval is 2014 through 2021. That's not done by the city, that's put on us by the state. So that means that our housing element, everybody else's housing element in Southern California, will expire in 2021, which means you have to do a new one. So that may seem like a long ways away, but it's not really. It's coming pretty quick. And one of the most important aspects of the housing element is the requirement to plan for growth for the number and type of housing units required by what's called the regional housing needs assessment. And that is done by the state via the regional body and then a subregional body, which is San Gabriel Valley COG, and then that's divvied to the city. So every city ends up with a certain number of units that you're required to provide capacity for. You may not want to, you may not like it, but the state requires it, and if you don't do it, just in the last month or so, the state has filed suit against the city of Huntington Beach because they don't, they're not in compliance with their housing element and in their ability, their capacity of units that they need to have to meet the regional housing needs assessment goals. So that's why I wanted to kind of provide that background a little bit, because it's coming up probably in the next year. We're going to have our allotment of those for the next period, which is probably going to be something like 2021 to 2030. In the 2014 to 2021 period, there was 831 units that were assigned to West Covina, basically. And that may sound like a lot of units, but actually, we may meet that goal, at least in the number, because so far, there have been 669 units constructed since 2014, the bulk of those being in the Colony Development on Glendora Avenue. But we've had quite a bit of housing development over the past, since 2014. So 831 is the goal for until 2021, we're at 669. That's in total number of units. You have to also understand that it's, there's affordable units that are part of that, and the affordable units, we haven't built any affordable units since 2014. We don't have any funding for that, and there is not a lot of funding out in the world that allows for those type of developers to build. So that's a special issue, not just for West Covina, but for almost everybody in the state. So that is the report, and we do have attachments that provide you some other information. The ones for the general plan we developed, and then the ones for the housing element are actually done by the state, and we just have to fill out the information that they require of us. So that concludes that. We're not really looking for a vote on this, just wanted to provide you the information and ask us any questions. In other words, we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Are there any questions of staff on this item? Yes, Commissioner Haques.
Yes, I just have one question, if you could might clarify regarding, let me get to it here, in the staff report, that reads to allow the general plan to stay a valuable tool for staff and community. Goals and objectives should be modified from time to time so that the meaning continues to be relevant. Can you explain what that exactly points to and how those kind of goals and objectives might be modified?
Okay, sure. So the goals and objectives, actually, if you were to go to attachment number two, you will see there's 19 pages of goals and objectives that were, that we have in our general plan now. Now, the general plan that we have now was adopted in 2016. The previous one was 1985, and there wasn't really many changes between now and, between '85 and 2016. But there's nothing that says you can't modify those from time to time. I wouldn't suggest doing that every year because it's a fairly big endeavor. But maybe you want, maybe the city wants to do it every five years or every 10 years to go back and look and see if these goals are still the goals that we have. And basically, the state says you can change your general plan, actually, you're encouraged to change your general plan as you go through time, but you're only allowed to change it four times a year. So, which is, that may seem like a lot. That would be a lot of work if we were updating goals and objectives four times a year. But that's kind of the idea. We kind of put that out there as part of the general plan process, that, you know, there's no need to wait 20 years to look at your goals and objectives. I think probably it makes sense to wait maybe five years, but it, but, and there's no set schedule. It's just sort of one of those things, a good idea, because you want, the goal is, you want to have a living document that you're using, and it allows staff to use that information to talk to developers and others about what the city wants. When we had a 1985 document, it was impossible for staff to discuss with developers at the counter what the city wanted. Now, we're in much better shape because we can talk to developers about what the city wants, but you go forward five years in the future, that starts to get a little bit washed down again, or washed out again. So that, I'm not sure if I'm answering that question. It's kind of a, it's kind of a wishy-washy answer, but it's kind of how it works.
No, I found your answer, you know, quite clear and with good guidance and advice.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? No? All right, thank you. We can move on to item number three, which is a study session regarding zone change number 19-01, a change of zone from R1 to MF20 for 1904 West Pacific Lane. Ms. Burns will be presenting the report.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission. On February 5, 2019, the city council adopted a resolution number 2019-08 initiating a zone change, to change the zoning of 1904 West Pacific Lane from single-family residential to multifamily residential. The zone change initiation was in response to request by the property owner of the subject site during the October 2, 2018, city council public hearing for a seven-unit multifamily development at 1920 West Pacific Lane. The property owner of the subject lot pointed out that the zoning of the property at, pointed out that the zoning of the property at 1904 West Pacific Lane was not consistent with the immediate adjacent properties. The zone change would make the zoning designation of the subject site consistent with the MF20 zoning designation of the adjacent properties located on the south, east, and west of the This, the photograph on the screen is the vicinity map. As you can see, the zoning of the subject site, which is, the zoning that's in yellow is R1 single-family, which is not consistent to the multifamily, which is the area that's colored in orange on the map. So this zone change would make it consistent with the surrounding multifamily zoning on the subject street. Basically, the zoning inconsistency is due to individual zone changes approved in the late 1950s through the early 1960s, which changed the zoning designation of the parcels surrounding the subject lot from R1 to R3. The R3 zoning designation was later changed to MF20 in June 1972. The purpose of the study session is to familiarize the planning commission with a zone change initiation and to provide information prior to the public hearing. Subsequent to the study session, a public hearing will be scheduled in front of the planning commission. The planning commission will then make a recommendation, and the zone change will be presented to the city council. If the planning commission has any questions, Jeff and I are available to answer.
I just, I did pass out an email. There was a comment from Robert Torres on item number three here, and as well as item number five later.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff on this? So this, so the city council initiated the zone change?
That's correct.
And then we do our thing, and then it goes back to them for the final?
Yes. So the city council initiated a zone change after the study session, if the planning commission has further, if the planning commission has no further questions, or if the planning commission doesn't ask us to do study sessions, further study sessions, the staff will schedule it for a public hearing in front of the planning commission, where we will send public hearing notices to all the properties within 300 feet from the subject lot. And then after, if the planning commission makes a decision when the public hearing is, during the public hearing, then it will get forwarded to the city council.
And directly across the street, the other properties that are shaded yellow, those are R1 also?
That's correct.
So everything on this side of the street is MF20?
That's correct.
Except for the one subject lot?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this? Yes, Commissioner Kennedy?
How come it was left out, 1904?
The other, the, when the zone changes were processed in the 1950s and 1960s, these parcels surrounding it were changed to the multifamily zone individually. So the property owners of those properties submitted an application to the city to change the zoning designation for these, for those properties, and the property owner for the subject lot did not submit the same application.
Interesting, okay. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? No? There's no action needed on this, right? So it's?
No, there is no action needed. If there's no questions, we will go forward and be planning a public hearing on this item. Probably the first meeting in April is our goal.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
By the way, we did contact the landowner. She was at the council initiation. We thought she might be here tonight, probably something came up, but we'll invite her again to come to that. I mean, she is in favor of this. She requested it as well.
Okay, and just one point, because the city initiated this, there's no cost to the landowner, correct?
That is correct.
Where there normally would be if?
If she would have, if the landowner would have proposed it, there would have been a cost. I believe it's a $5,000 application fee.
So we saved her five grand. That's pretty nice of us, I think. Okay, very good. We will move on to item number four, which is another study session for code amendment number 19-01, a review of code for small recycling facilities. And that is?
Me as well.
You again, lucky you. All right, thank you.
On February 12, 2019, the planning commission adopted a resolution to initiate a code amendment to the West Covina Municipal Code pertaining to development standards for small recycling facilities. The planning commission directed staff to present information on the location of all small recycling facilities within the city and what other markets are doing to address the state's beverage container recycling mandate. The essential code amendment is being considered by the planning commission as a result of a, in request received from, by the planning division from Replanet representative Paige H. Gosny. Replanet is here in the audience today. The planning commission discussed Replanet's request in detail at the February 12 planning commission meeting. The map on the projector is a map of all the recycling facilities in the city, as well as surrounding areas. Staff researched similar small recycling facilities within the city and found that there is only one other small recycling facility located in West Covina. Other than the Replanet location on 1025 East Amar Road, there is another recycling facility that is located on 1314 West Francis Gator Road, which is called the Sunset Recycling Center. This is located on the North Gate Market parking lot on Sunset Square. The other recycling facilities in this map is not located within the city of West Covina and are outside of the city's boundaries. The map on the projector is the, an aerial map of Sunset Square, which is the North Gate Shopping Center. I'm going to go ahead and show you a comparison of this particular recycling center location to the recycling center location on Amar Road that Replanet is located on. This particular shopping center is twice as large as a shopping center that the Replanet Recycling Center is located on, and the particular recycling facility is located greater than 260 feet from the neighboring multifamily residential property across Francis Gator Avenue, right along here. As you know, the West Covina Municipal Code requires that recycling centers be at least 250 feet from a residential zone property or residential uses. This, this particular shopping center is also located within, is also surrounded by residential uses to the, to the north, south, east, and west. However, as I mentioned earlier, it is quite, the shopping center itself is larger than the shopping center at Amar Road. This is the subject property on 1025 East Amar Road. The Replanet Recycling Center is located approximately 150 feet from the neighboring residential properties to the south and west. Staff contacted the California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery and was informed that other grocery stores in the city have exempt convenience zones due to their close proximity to other recycling facilities located both within and outside of the city. In fact, this particular recycling facility serves three other grocery stores in the area, and those three other grocery stores in the city are exempt due to the location in close proximity of this particular recycling facility. These grocery stores are Seafood City, Island Pacific, and Tokyo Central. Staff looked at all the lot configurations of all the grocery stores within the city and discovered that this particular shopping center in the North Gate Shopping Center is particularly unique in the fact that it is surrounded by residential uses. The other grocery, the other grocery stores in the city are in commercial corridors that are surrounded with, are adjacent to at least two to three commercially zoned properties and commercial uses. In addition to not complying, complying with the 200-feet minimum distance requirement from residential zoning and uses, staff discovered that the size of the Stater Brothers on Amar Road and Viland Avenue is less than the, less than the 3,000-square-foot minimum size market required to qualify, I'm sorry, 30,000 minimum size market required to qualify for a small recycling facility on its parking lot. Staff is also recommending that the code amendment include reducing the minimum market size threshold to 25,000 square feet because of the intent, because the intent of the 30,000-square-foot minimum market size threshold was not to prevent large grocery stores like Stater Brothers from having recycling facilities, but it's to prevent small markets like convenience stores, pharmacies, or other similar small markets from having recycling facilities on their parking lot. The 300-foot minimum market size threshold prohibits the bonds on 777 South Glendora Avenue, Island Pacific, and Seafood City from potentially having a small recycling facilities on their lots if they desire to do so. With this, staff recommends that the planning commission accept the report to support discussion regarding the initiated code amendment and provide further direction or input to staff regarding the code amendment. If the planning commission has any questions, I'm glad to answer.
Thank you. I have, it's interesting that the other three markets are exempt because of the Replanet, which is operating out of compliance and, you know, without a business license at the current time, and they're depending on that location. Now, we have where the Albertsons was, we have the Sprouts going in. I believe there was some research done on the square footage?
Yes.
Of that market?
Yes, it's over 30,000.
Okay, so it's over 30, even when they divide it, because they're going to divide it between a gym use and a market use. So there could be an opportunity for another, because there was one there years ago. It was a Replanet, actually, when it was Albertsons, and it was really in a good location on the corner there. The most recent one was kind of buried in the back and became kind of a magnet for, you know, certain homeless people, actually. So, okay, so any questions of staff?
Yes, I just want a clarification. Actually, this is what you said, Commissioner Redholtz, about the exemption of the other markets. Is it because of the small recycling facility that's at the Stater Brothers, or is it because of the not being able to comply with being on the right size of lot of the 30,000-square-foot threshold?
The state exemption for the other three grocery stores is because of the, its close proximity to the recycling center on 1025 East Amar Road, which is the recycling center serving the Stater Brothers facility. Excuse me? No, it's greater than a half mile. It's, but it's still within close proximity. I specifically contact, I've been emailing with the state, and they confirmed that that exemption is due to this location.
And it's, I would assume it's, there's no other place on that Stater Brothers lot that would be in compliance?
That's correct.
No matter what?
That's correct.
Couldn't move it, it's still going to be about 150 feet?
That's correct.
Okay, you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify regarding the, like, the Seafood and the Tokyo Center. When you mentioned exempt, can you clarify that?
So what is meant by exempt is that none of, none of the grocery stores are considered in unserved status, which means that the, that the grocery stores are not going to be required by the state to pay the $100-a-day minimum penalty.
So they can't have a recycle center over there? The three stores that you had mentioned?
No, not, not at this time. The, okay, so the exempt status is, the exempt status is because the, because of the close proximity of this particular recycling center to the, to these three sites. So the state is not going to require them to have, to have a recycling center on site, or, and also, they're not going to fine them $100 per day for not having the recycling center on site. And as far as whether or not these three sites can have a recycling center on their, on site, three markets can have a recycling center on site, Seafood City and Island Pacific right now, because of the current code, does not, would not be allowed to have recycling center or facility on their site because they're less than 30,000 square feet. Tokyo Central, possibly, if they wanted to have a recycling center on that particular site.
So nothing is prohibiting them? I mean, I think that's basically your question.
Important to keep in mind that what Joanne is talking about is the state, those are state requirements, have nothing to do with the city's requirements. So the state has requirements that you're, to provide recycling facilities, the city has allowances to where they can be held. Those two things are not necessarily, they don't, they're not connected at all.
Well, I understand that. That's why I'm saying that regarding Seafood City, Tokyo Center, and Island Pacific, so if they would, would they meet the code requirement for a city regarding the 30,000 square footage and the 250 feet from residential?
The Seafood City, no, because of the 30,000. Island Pacific, no, because of the 30,000. Tokyo, Tokyo Central, I'm not, they do meet the 30,000, and from, from what I remember from the measurement, they, they can possibly put a recycling center there, but I haven't, I haven't looked into it in much greater detail. The distance requirement, yes, but there are also other, other site configurations and, and items that we need to consider if they wanted to put a recycling center there, like, for instance, park, the parking requirement. That's something that I haven't really looked into, so I'm not sure if they would be able to put it there. But based on the 30,000, yes, and also the distance requirements from residential, yes.
Let me ask you this. Regarding Seafood City, Island, and Tokyo Center, would they meet the 250 feet? Because there are two criteria. One is 30,000, the other one is 250 feet from residential area.
Yes.
So they potentially can meet?
Because they're surrounded by mostly commercial.
Okay, so the other two big stores, grocery stores, can potentially meet the 250 feet from residential area?
That's correct.
But they're not meeting the 30,000 square footage regarding, 30,000 square footage is the size of the grocery store?
That's correct.
Not the entire shopping center?
Not the entire center, that's correct.
How big is Seafood City? Do you know?
It's?
I thought Island is pretty big.
I don't remember exactly, but I, I know it's a little I don't remember exactly, but I know it's a little bit under, it's, it may be a little bit over 25,000, but under 30.
I think when we looked, they were all over 25.
Yes.
So they're between 25 and 30, that's the...
When we looked, it wasn't, we just did a Google Map measurement, it's not exact. So it's around 25, a little bit over 25.
So the Stater Brother facility does not meet two of the requirement, which is the 30,000 and the 250 feet from residential area. However, the other three stores, the Islands, Tokyo Center, and Seafood City, potentially meets one of the criteria set by the city, which is the 250 feet from residential area, but not the 30,000 square footage of the store size.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Nope. All right, let's bring up Mr. Gosny.
Members of the commission, really didn't have anything substantive to add to staff's presentation. I thought Ms. Burns did an outstanding job. I think the proposed code amendments, once they're kind of initially, you know, put pen to paper and you have something before you at a public hearing, I think they'll provide the city the flexibility that it needs or it can use to make sure that recycling is made convenient for consumers, which is consistent with AB 2020. And it would also allow for, ultimately, assuming that a permit was ultimately issued, that for this site, the Amar Road location, to continue operating and providing recycling services to the neighborhood as they've been doing for the last 15 years. We're supportive of the proposed amendments, and we look forward to coming back before you at a public hearing in the future.
Any questions? Okay, so you're continuing to operate now?
Yes, we have, we've had some issues with Stater Brothers, and then obviously, if we were to stop operating, then all of these other supermarkets that are currently exempt from the state requirements would be out of compliance, and then they would be either required to provide recycling services inside the store, or contract with someone like Replanted or another, essentially to get a permit, or to pay the $100 a day fine, which is what Ms. Burns was discussing.
Okay, so right now, I mean, I understand the need. I mean, I went by there yesterday, I guess they're closed on Monday, because they weren't open yesterday. But today it's open, and it's busy. I mean, you know, it's obviously fulfilling a need, because it's a very busy center there. So, I mean, right now, there's no, and I'm not looking for any, but right now, there is no punitive action against you, right? I mean, for operating without the license or anything?
No.
I mean, I'm trying to, I mean, I'd like to, what can we do to, is there anything, when I say we, I mean the city, to, I mean, this has to go through the process. So in the meantime, they operate as they're doing, I guess.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure this is a good place for that discussion, it's more of an enforcement issue discussion. I think that their request is to go forward, to think about the code and decide whether it's a good idea in the code, that's the mission of the planning commission and us at this time. You know, we can, we can look into some of those other issues. Sometimes there may be penalties to, when you get a business license, if you haven't had a business license for some time, there can be penalties for those kind of things. So there are possibilities on that kind of thing. They, just to cover the whole thing again, you know, you have to go through the code amendment, which is planning commission hearing, city council hearing, second reading, 30-day timeframe, they need an administrative use permit then to operate. So then, they've already submitted that, we'd have to go through that process, we'd have to do mailings and consideration, and perhaps come back to planning commission for consideration. So this is basically at least a three and maybe a four-step process, depending on how you count the second reading, and each one of those steps takes about a month, so it's not something that's going to happen really quickly. But same time, you know, we can't make it happen any faster till we start moving down to knock those four steps off.
And just to be clear, I'm not looking to punish you, you know, that's what I'm not looking for, I'm looking to try and see what we can do to, but I do have a question for you. If, how, it says in the staff report, Replanted's legal nonconforming status, let's see, pertaining to the development standards was lost, and a business license cannot be issued because the facility is located where it's located. Can somebody explain to me how that happened?
I'm sure if I may, the facility there has been operating since, I believe it was 2003, is when they initially, and that, I believe, predated the city's ordinance with respect to small recycling facilities, and it had been in exactly the same location, just changed hands from ownership to ownership, you know, over the past 15 years. And then obviously, when Replanted, which acquired it in 2013, you know, when it came to their attention that no permit, that they didn't actually have the permit, and that obviously to get a business license, you have to have a permit, so it's kind of a chicken before the egg type concern, we immediately met with Mr. Anderson and staff and said, you know, what can we do to bring this into compliance and figure out a path forward? And that's where we started down the path towards the development code amendment, and we've been working, I think as you can see, with staff and with commissioners closely and as cooperatively as we can to make sure, number one, that we cross all Ts, we dot all Is, we do everything that we need to do, but we also, number one, you know, continue providing recycling services that we've been doing for the past 15 years without issue, without complaint. And then also, you know, ensuring that Stater Brothers and Tokyo Central and all these other supermarkets that depend on this facility for their exemption from the state, that, you know, they're allowed to continue under that umbrella while this process plays out.
Right, no, I understand, I understand all of that, but it just, it kind of just is a bit mind-boggling that that would not be noticed by anybody at any level, corporate or otherwise, that there was, that this situation was happening, that no one knew there was no, that this was going to, we didn't have a business license, we weren't, I understand about the 250, but, you know, a business license seems like a pretty basic thing to know that you would need to operate. So I'm just, you know, I mean, I want to get it corrected, but it just seems odd that it would even happen in the first place. So, I know.
I'm sure.
Any questions of the gentleman while he's at the mic? Nope?
Thank you.
All right, so, again, no action on this item tonight, so...
No action, but we really are looking for direction. So I think we don't, there's no resolution before you, but we are suggesting that we, the way to, the solution to this dilemma is to come back with a code amendment that would reduce the square footage necessary for a market from 30 to 25, and then change that, to change the code to add a 150 distance if there's an arterial separating this center from residential. So we'd look for direction for that, probably a motion, a second, and a vote, just so that we know how.
And again, this is really for this location. I mean, it doesn't really have anything to do with any other location, we're just trying to...
Well, yes, that's true, but it would affect other locations. I think the location, if you can go back to the location for the other shopping center, you'd note that even that shopping center will change, it'll change where it could go, because you can see it's 260 feet, so then it's going to, on that front, on that front parking lot, it could move now another 100 feet closer to Franciscato. So it does have an effect. What we don't think is it has a very negative effect on residential uses, because there's still a busy street that separates them.
Right, I got you.
Okay, so as far as what is recommended by staff, as far as reducing the distance by 100 feet and reducing the requirement for the grocery store by 5,000 feet, does any commissioner have any comment on that, or any concerns? Commissioner Hing?
Well, I'd like to add that I am comfortable with the reducing the store size to 2,500 feet, but I'm not comfortable reducing the square footage from residential area, which is 250 feet, 250 feet to begin, it's not that far from residential area. And it's, if we can tug the recycling center further into, you know, inside the shopping center, that would be a better idea, because we do have other centers that are large enough to accommodate the 250 feet, there are quite a few, basically. And especially if we're affecting one, you know, we're affecting the whole entire city, the recycling center, especially this one, too. And the apartment owner of that particular, this particular one, the North Gate, they had already mentioned that they don't like to hear the noises and all that prior to the approval.
Okay, anybody else have any? Put your mic on, please.
This, reduce it to 150 feet, now will it affect Azusa and Amar, both properties? Or is this just amendment for Amar and Villinda?
Well, it doesn't affect those, I don't think, because there's no residential across the street from them.
So this is only for them and them only?
No, no, it's not only for them, though. There'd be other centers where there's a residential across the street, so it only affects centers where there's residential across the street. So another example, that would be Cameron and Glendora, where the Vons is, that front, it's across the street from residential, across Glendora, so it would affect that center as well. So there's certain centers that it would affect, but not necessarily all centers.
Okay, thank you. And if a supermarket wants a recycling center, I mean, is there someplace where, how do they hook up with a recycling center? You know, say they wanted one, I mean, what is the... Mr., would you like to address that? Thank you.
Also, just say that, keep in mind, as we're talking about these standards, that the standards are what would be required, they don't necessarily mean they have to be approved. There's still a discretionary process called administrative use permit, that if someone came and protested, the planning commission, city council could still deny the proposal. It's not, it's not if you change the standards, they're going to be allowed everywhere. There's still that process, requires notification, and a possible hearing before the planning commission, a possible appeal to the city council.
On the issue of how supermarkets connect with recycling centers, Replanted in particular has agreements with some of the larger supermarket chains, Albertsons, Stater Brothers, where they're kind of like the preferred vendor that they reach out to, because, I mean, Replanted is the biggest small, you know, recycling center company in the state, and so that's, it's kind of a contractual arrangement that they have with certain supermarkets. Individual standalone markets, like the Tokyo Central or the Island, they, you know, would have to enter into their own kind of agreement with a company like Replanted or another provider to satisfy that requirement.
Typically, the supermarket would reach out as opposed to Replanted reaching out? Or could it be either way?
Well, Replanted, if you have a supermarket like Stater Brothers, for example, that knows that it needs to have, provide recycling services at its particular location, because of the pre-existing relationship with Replanted and the contractual arrangement, they would reach out to Replanted first or directly, but then other markets, for example, may not, or other smaller places would, can still contract with Replanted, that's not necessarily an issue, but they would have to build that relationship separately.
Very good, thank you very much. You have a question?
Yes, but you can ultimately reach out to the grocery stores, too, to see if you can have recycle center over at their stores.
Yes, that's correct, but again, that's a privately negotiated transaction.
Correct, I understand. That's basically, it's both way. If you want to have recycle center in the other three stores, you can potentially reach out to them as well. Or any stores in West Covina, you can actually potentially reach out to them.
That's correct. Madison stands now, for example, some of these supermarkets that are exempt, they have no incentive. Why would they want to enter into an agreement where they're paying Replanted to provide recycling, because they're not out of compliance with the state? Thank you.
To, I'm sorry, to provide a visual of what Jeff was talking about earlier, this is the shopping center, the Von Shopping Center on Glendora Avenue, there's residential across the street, as you can see.
We, I'm sorry, did you want to? No, I was just going to say, we've heard from Commissioner Hing, she has a concern about the reducing the 250 to 150 from residential, I'd like to hear if, where the other commissioners are on this. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah, I have no issue, reduce it to 150 feet.
Okay, Mr. Hockes?
Same here, I don't have an issue with reducing to 150 feet.
Okay, Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Hing, you used to be heard?
I guess I'd like to make a motion to have this reduced to 2,500 square foot versus to keep the 250...
25,000.
25,000 square foot, and then keep the 250 from residential area.
Okay, we have a motion to...
I'll second it.
You're going to second it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. The motion is, just to clarify, to reduce the supermarket square footage to 25,000 square feet, and to reduce it to...
No, to keep it at 250.
To keep it at 250, was that your motion?
Yes.
To keep it at 250. Okay, so we need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me do, you want to do a voice vote?
Well, she wants to keep it at 250.
She wants to keep, yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, let's do a voice vote.
Okay. Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Hockes?
No.
Chairman Reddles?
No. Motion fails two, three.
So now we'd be looking for another motion.
I'll entertain another motion if someone would wish to make one.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to, in support of staff's recommendation to reduce the square footage requirement to 25,000 square feet, and the distance requirement, distance to residential to 150 feet.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Hockes, second by Kennedy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
No.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
Chairman Reddles?
Aye, that motion passes four to one. Now, question is, this action, is this action appealable at this level, or...
No, no, no.
No, okay, that's what I was wondering, because it wasn't an action item.
No, it's not really an action item, but it's also not in, it's not a case file, right? It's a code amendment, so the planning commission, or actually, who initiated this? The planning commission initiated this code amendment, so it's, and it has to go to council, so there's no reason to appeal, so it has to go to council. So what will happen next is that we will go about to prepare the code amendment, we're going to work with the city attorney's office, we will bring that back, when we have it all done, we'll get it noticed, we'll talk to the folks here that are, that have paid for the processing, and then we'll bring it back sometime in the next, probably two months. So, and we will notice a public hearing at that point in time.
Okay, so we don't need, we will not have another study session, we're going to, it's going to go to the next level?
Not from the direction you gave us, was pretty solid, and I think, so I think we're ready to move forward.
Very good, okay. All right, very good, thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, we're moving on to item number five, which is a study session on the Design Review Subcommittee of the Planning Commission, that would be Mr. Anderson.
Yes, this is what I would call kind of an educational discussion here on the Subcommittee. I did, before I start, I want to point out that Mr. Torres also, in his email, he also had some comments on this item, so wanted to bring that to your attention. We've done this before from time to time, when we get several new planning commissioners that are appointed, just to sort of kind of go over everything and maybe re-educate the other, the existing planning commissioners on how we got where we're at. It's always fun to figure out, how do we get here? I think there was a song about that by, "How did I get here?", I forget who's saying that. Okay, so the planning commissioners, in about 2003, the city council at the time, the planning commission at the time decided that they wanted to kind of address some of the things they were seeing happening in residential neighborhoods. So they kind of looked at different ways to do that, the council wanted to be involved, and council at that time didn't seem to be wanting to involve, but the planning commission then had the ability to set up what's called a Subcommittee, that's allowed by, I think, Robert's Rules of Order. So they went about to do that, they set up a Subcommittee based on their concept, or based on the rules as a planning commission. They did that for several years, and about 2008, we did process a code amendment that brought this in before the planning commission, later city council, and they codified it, they put it in the code. So now it is in the code, what the process is, who's supposed to go through it, and how it works, and who's appointed. So generally, we have two people appointed, and those people are appointed by the planning commissioner, I'm sorry, those people are appointed by the planning commission chairman, and right now, the appointment has been made for Herb Reddles and Sheena Hing, and that's kind of a, generally, historically, the planning commission chairman hasn't served, but because of the way things have happened over the past few months, it's developed that Herb and Sheena are sitting on that committee, and in matter of fact, sat on it tonight, made a decision. So, the types of construction that require Subcommittee reviewer in the staff report, new construction... construction of single-family residences, structural additions or modifications on the strun, uh, front elevation of residences, new second-story additions to one-story residences, new second-story additions to two-story houses, uh, new balconies, and other modifications that are readily visible from the public right-of-way. So the idea is, if you're going to modify the way it looks from the street, which is basically the look of the city and the neighborhood, then those need to be reviewed by a subcommittee. And the stated, I, I won't necessarily read it, but there is a stated purpose, and that's quoting the code, which is, uh, to ensure quality development, orderly development, conserve property values, and some other ideas, that, that's the whole purpose for the subcommittee. I provided on attachment three, the actual code section, which is a very short section, it's not very long, it's pretty, it's pretty simple and straightforward, and it's meant to be. The whole process for subcommittee is meant to be simple and straightforward. It's not a design review committee, we don't have architects, we don't, we're not debating the merits of architectural style, we are looking at certain, uh, very simple, general principles that we, we, that we want people to kind of follow. And in that regard, over the years, the subcommittee, with the planning commission, the subcommittee and the planning commission, so these have been adopted by the planning commission, actually, there's subcommittee guidelines, keep in mind that the subcommittee is a subcommittee of the planning commission, rotates among its members. So, the, the planning commission adopted guidelines, rules of thumb. Um, at first, it was primarily concerned with conversion of one-story houses into two-story houses, especially in neighborhoods where you had one story, and now somebody wants to build a two-story. Well, what's the best way to give advice on how to help a one-story house to fit into a two-story context? That, that, that was the goal. And so, the, the subcommittee came up with a, uh, well, I shouldn't say a subcommittee, the planning commission came up with a, a list, that's attachment number one, of guidelines for two-story additions. And generally, those are really talking about when you go into a one-story neighborhood. There are neighborhoods that are two-story, and they don't really have the same rules, right? They don't, if you have a two-story neighborhood, you don't need to design a house that fits into a one-story neighborhood, because it's not a one-story neighborhood. So, um, and then over the years, we, we modified that a few times, it really hasn't been modified since 2010, and I don't think that's because nobody cares, or there, there hasn't been a lot of, uh, thought into it, I think it has to do with the fact that we've got the subcommittee guidelines in a place where they cover most of the issues that we face. So this, the planning commission, one of the reasons we bring this up, is the planning commission does have the ability to, to look at the subcommittee guidelines and see if there's something that needs to be changed, added, uh, eliminated, um, they are, they're not staffs, we implement them, but it, they're the planning commission and the subcommittee's guidelines and direction on what to do to get approval on, on it, on a new change to a house. After a little while, we recognized that, you know, we have subcommittee guidelines for two-story, but it's a good idea to have s, subcommittee guidelines also for one-story additions, because those also, there, there's reasons why you might want to advise people on what to do. And so, we, we, those were developed, and those were also last, um, modified in 2010. Those are found for, before you in, in attachment two. So, generally, the idea is, we have subcommittee guidelines, and you can see, they're not very many, it's not like you have to have a, a degree to figure what they're out, there's only, there's 12 or so for two-story, and maybe eight for, for maybe a little bit more than that, most like 15 and 10. Um, but they're all, they all fit on one page. Do these things, and you'll get approval. And generally, that's what's happened. Been a couple hiccups on that, for one reason or another, but generally, and I, and, and after I'm done talking, you may wish to hear from the current, uh, subcommittee members, but generally, when they follow the guidelines, they get approval. And, and, and the planning commission as a whole doesn't see them. Then, in 2017, something happened with the subcommittee, they, they were noting that they were seeing, what my memory is, that they were seeing lots of porch changes. So people were coming in and proposing to change the front porch of their house. You know, it's an eight-square-foot front porch. And they said, why, why do they have to, why do they have to come to us? Well, because they fit under that list of things, the change of the front elevation. So, through discussions, we, we determined, well, there's another way we could do this, we can set up a policy that if they're under these, this threshold, that they, they have to submit a subcommittee, we have to, staff has to review it, but we find that they meet the guidelines, we can approve it without taking them to subcommittee. And that was approved by, it was the subcommittee's idea to speed these things up. Again, it's meant to be efficient, to move quickly. Um, so those, those are listed for you on page two, basically, those are ex, like exterior siding replacement on the front of the house, new front porches, additions to the side of an existing single-family residence that's visible from the s, side street or the front street, conversions of garages into living space when they're converting a garage attached to the house, and they're building a garage in the back of the house, additions to the rear of the side of an existing single-family residence, and, uh, so those, those type of things. So, um, that's how we do that now, and I never have looked at the exact percentage, it's probably somewhere between 10 and 20% of the proposals we get actually fit under that policy. We did a lot of smaller modifications of the front of houses that are required to go, but they're not, they don't rise to the level where the planning, the subcommittee thinks that they, they need to see them. So, I wanted to provide this information for you, because we have new commissioners, and kind of just have, have that, uh, before the, the commission as a whole. That's my report, and, uh, might welcome some comments from the existing subcommittee members on, on, on how that goes, just sort of an educational for other planning commissions, as well as any public that might be watching.
Commissioner Hing, did you want to make any comment, or, on the subcommittee?
No, I've been in subcommittee for a year or two, I believe, or, I don't know. But it seems pretty relatively, uh, simple, and for the most part, I believe, by the time it comes to us, they had followed the guidelines, and we, in general, most of the time, it's, it's, it's being approved. So, it's not, it's, I just don't want the public to think that it's hard because they have to go through another hoop, but it, to some extent, it's also subjective as well. So it's only depending on the, both of us looking at the guidelines, and if possible, we can find a way to make it less subjective. That's just, you know, what I thought of.
Well, I, you know, I mean, it's really been, uh, since the subcommittee was proposed and has evolved, it's become a godsend, really, because it saved a lot of time, because everything used to have to go through the planning commission. And the, the purpose of the subcommittee was to take some of that, uh, off the plate of the planning commission. And, you know, when the guidelines were established, when, when a, uh, somebody comes to the, to the counter at the planning department, they have a list, and they're handed the guidelines, so they know what is expected of them. And, you know, by the time it, it gets to us, if they're in compliance with, you know, that's even part of what's, the recommendations are, that the proposal in front of you is in compliance with your guidelines. So, you know, sometimes there's a little correction to, to show the parkway, or, you know, make a minor, minor adjustment, but typically, they're, they follow the guidelines, so it makes it relatively easy. And, uh, those subcommittee meetings, you know, they're, they are, not that the public attends, but they're open to the public, if they wanted to. And sometimes the applicant, or the architect, or someone represent, representing the applicant will be there to, you know, answer questions. Not very often, but that does happen. But usually, it's a relatively quick process, and, uh, it's, it's, it's been really good. And it's also, you know, for commissioners, it's, it's an educational thing, too. So, you know, that's my comment on it.
So, there's no reason for any vote or anything here, it's just, it's information. If you have questions, you can ask, if not, then you can, you can move on.
Any questions of staff? One question, Ms. Commissioner Hockes.
Yeah, actually, to follow up on what Commissioner Hing, uh, mentioned about having, um, less subjective guidelines, um, and, um, and anticipating that it could be on the design committee at some point in the future. Is that something, uh, that, um, from the staff perspective, we have in mind, that there's potentially room for improvement based on what's been learned, or the lessons learned over having these guidelines, uh, for the past, how's it been, nine years or so? Um, is there, uh, and that room for improvement, what, what would it take if, if you, you've, if you had a, a wish list of things to improve upon?
That's a, that's a, that's a tall order for me, but let, let me say this, that, um, by definition, design is subjective, so it is, it's a little difficult to, to, and, and I'm not, I don't have anything in mind here, but it doesn't mean, w, w, the way that we did this before, just in some of you, I think maybe Don or Herb might remember this, i, i, these aren't, these are not necess, obviously, staff's involved, but these aren't necessarily staffs, these, these, the subcommittee was the one that came up with these, and then we brought them to the city council. So one thing that we could do, uh, at a ti, sometime when we don't have very many items on, we could just have the guidelines and have a discussion at, at subcommittee, it makes it easier to have that discussion and go through each one, we don't have to do it all at once, get through five of them and go through, so that discussion we can have and see if there's a way that we can make them, I, I agree wholeheartedly, we want to make them as, 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 we want to reduce the subjectivity as much as possible. But I, I think I would warn you, it probably is impossible to, to do that. So, just to, in, for discussion's sake, how do you make a, a two-story house fit into a one-story neighborhood? Well, we talk about horizontal articulation, we talk about setback, but both those are subject, they're subjective, right? What's hor, horizontal articulation? How much horizontal articulation? When you say setback of a second story from a first story, how much is enough to help it to fit into that context? So we don't, we don't say in here, so it leaves it partly subjective. So partly, we want to, the subjectivity is, leaves it open for discussion, but it, I see, I can see Commissioner Hing's point, I, I agree with her wholeheartedly, you want to make this as helpful for people as possible, because not everybody that comes in is dealing, is, 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 is being, uh, helped by someone who's a very, a good designer or a, or an architect. Some people are doing it on their own, and they're trying to figure out what you're talking about. If you have a designer, they, they're going to know these things, but homeowners or contractors who are doing it on their own, they, they're a little, it's a little bit different, so I, 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 that would be my suggestion. We, we can easily do that, I think, that's how we did it before.
I think it's good to have this type of conversations, because a resident, which is affecting their home, and we like to hear, in a lot of time in planning commissions, we don't hear from the residents, or the architects, or the engineers, or the developer, in terms of what it is that is helpful to them. And we get it toward the end, and a lot of time, um, residents, too, in their lifetime, they might be only working on one project, or, or, or what have you, in the home, and it's a huge project, with any type of development, it costs a lot of money, anything from 100, 200, 300, and up. So, ideally, if we can, we, you know, I like to invite the residents, and a lot of time, they're, we're affecting their home, and I like to be able to hear back from them, I know, liking to hear back from them, it's not the same thing as if they're here, is to have a, open discussions in terms of what it is that we can do to help, basically, move the processes ahead, basically getting the participations. I don't know if they are aware regarding, I'm not sure, so, like the developers, and the engineers, the architects, and the residents, we don't really hear from them in terms of what would be helpful. Maybe at the end of the projects, we can ask them to, I'm not sure, so...
We do hear from them sometimes, but we hear a variety of things, we don't always hear the same things that, that, that you or the city council hear. Uh, I guess I would say, if I go back and try to express why this started to begin with, and I, I don't want, I don't want to be too dictatorial, but it, it, it wasn't to help out people who are doing additions, it was actually to bring them into the sphere to make it consistent with what's going on. So, before, it was easier, there was no subjectivity, because before, there was no review. You wanted to tear down and build a house, you tore down and built a house, didn't matter what it looked like. Um, and specifically, the thing that was coming up was that in certain neighborhoods that were mostly ranch-style, people were building Mediterranean houses. Ranch-style one-story, they built a two-story Mediterranean, a lot of times with columns that went up two stories. So this, so this is what the start of it was, so I, I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Hing, but I want you to understand, the reason that we have this is kind of almost the opposite of what you're suggesting. So, there's got to be a happy medium, we need to figure out where that happy medium is, as we talked about with the general plan, that happy medium may change over time. We haven't reviewed this for 10 years, it's probably a good idea to review it, to see if we're still on that happy medium, between what the city expects a neighborhood to look like, and making it easy for people to, as easy as, I mean, as easy as possible for people to go through the process. Because, as we all know, that's been through any of this, or watched anybody, it's not easy. I don't care if, if you don't have any requirements on the city, it's not going to be easy because of the amount of construction and all, there's just a lot that goes into it. So, uh, that, that's my comment on that. I, I think if, if we're interested in doing that, from the subcommittee's perspective, and for the planning commissioners' perspective, I think there's an easy way to start this conversation, figure out there's a way to modify these, that it makes everyone happy. Again, these are not staffs, these are the commission's, uh, guidelines, and, uh, we're more than happy to, to, to modify them to, to fit what the commission wants to, uh, wants to achieve with the, the subcommittee.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, we will set about to do that, to schedule it at some upcoming meeting, to kind of just walk through, we'll start with a two-story, because those are, those are probably the most subjective, subjective, I think the one-stories are easier. Um, and we get through the two-stories, I think the one-stories will talk themselves, so we, we will do that.
All right, thank you, thank you all for the comments. Uh, there's no one here to speak anymore on oral communications? So we are at, uh, Commission Reports, Comments, Miscellaneous. Any commission comment? No, I have one. We used to hear a lot more about the art in public places. What, what happened to that? And are we still collecting fees for that? And do we have money in that fund? And, because, you know, we have big projects come in front of us, and, you know, there has to meet a, has to meet a threshold, the, I mean, the, the building pyramid has to be a certain amount of money, and we've had some projects come forward, and, can you give me a...
Yeah, we, it's funny, we were just talking about that today in a meeting, what, what's happening with that. So, generally, what's happened with that is that we've, we have switched from having lots of, uh, commercial construction to lots of residential construction. So if you think about the, what's being constructed, a lot of it's residential. Residential has a lower amount that they're required to pay. So the threshold there is so low that they don't, they decide never to build art, so that just goes into our fund. Um, secondarily, some of the projects that you think may, may have paid a lot into that, pay very little, so, uh, we always throw Portos under the bus, so Portos, port, you're only required to, uh, generally, for, for the, the, the valuation that you're adding. So, th, th, they're, they're, they're just, it's not, they're not adding that much. So, uh, there is money still going in, and there are things that might happen, Portos is, is talked about maybe doing some art, I don't know that they're going to do it, they, they've talked about the idea. And then we, we, the money that is given for the residential projects goes into an Art in Public Places Fund that we, we will need to probably address sometime in the near future, I think, uh, because of the way things have worked, and because we spent a lot of the money when we did the, uh, Veterans Memorial, we got down to a low number when, when, when that was going in, that, you know, it sort of had to build back up before we had a chance to do another art project. I would suspect that over the next couple of years, there'll be, we'll be maybe talking about that.
So, the approval process for, for art, used to be...
It's still, there's been no changes to the code.
Okay, so that would still come to the planning commission?
Correct.
Okay. And like, say, the Merrill Gardens project, there would have to be, I would think, art.
So, uh, there are certain projects that are exempt, senior housing is exempt from art in public places. So that's another, I didn't think about that one when I was talking, but, you know, we also have two other assisted living facilities that are in the pipeline, so we're getting a lot of those. The one, yeah, I, so that, that's basically the story. There, there's money still being collected, but, but we're not having the big projects, because we don't have, we're not having the big commercial projects that we used to have.